Our dog is, emergency. Dog is number 11. They saw something, I'm not sure if it might be a sister of cancer.
Okay, can we begin the meeting by the pledge of the flag, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, the moment of silence this evening before the victims of 911, some of the survivors who went through some terrible suffering, and many of the first responders really sacrificed a lot through the 911 tragedy. Thank you. We'll call it, Mark.
Mr. Braminski? Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Ms. Wacus?
Present.
And Mr. McGinley?
Present.
As noted, we have two people tonight that are beyond the phone participating in meeting, Ms. Howe and Mr. Vog. And there are no recognitions or ceremony or proclamations this evening, any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second? A segment? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions, none heard? Motion carries. Public comment on voting session agenda items. I don't have any slips up here, is there anyone in the public who would like to address council regards the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Done on the new business, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 14th meeting? A segment?
Second.
Ms. Wacus, on the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Urban? Any abstentions?
Abstention, I wasn't here.
Mr. Kelleher, stains? He was not present. Motion carries. May I have a motion on the minutes of the August 29th meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher? And second, Mr. Snee? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Urban? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Moving over to the second page. A motion adopt a resolution authorizing county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne, Wyoming County's agency on aging and supervisors of Exeter Township for the Falls Active Adult Center.
So moved.
Second.
A segment? And Mr. Urban? On the question? Roll call, please, Mark.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
And Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous? Moving down to number two, motion adopt a resolution authorizing county manager to execute a retainer agreement for litigation for recovery of certain 911 and/or E-911 fees that are required to have been billed, collected, and/or remitted by the telecommunication providers.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wacus? On the question?
Um, just, how was a law firm acquired?
How was the law firm acquired? Ms. Kokomo, you want to speak to that?
But there were discussions with various law firms. We received a number of calls and we reviewed them and we have the best offer from a firm that we know will represent us zealously and is aware of the litigation.
Okay. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yeah.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous? Moving down to number three, motion adopt a resolution providing tax exemption for new construction in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistant Act.
So moved.
Mr. Snee? Second, Ms. Sedman? On the question?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Chair, I'd like to make an amendment as referenced on page 38 of your agenda packet. And the amendment concerns amending the abatement schedule under section 3.3 listed there from, rather than the proposal, I'd like to see a 30% property tax abatement between years one and three, as opposed to seven years of 100% property tax abatement. I'd like to see year four reflect a 20% property tax abatement and the final five years reflect a 10% property tax abatement. I think it's a very fair compromise and we'd have some discussion on that, I'm all ears.
You making that motion?
I am.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Howe? On the amendment, on the question?
If I could again, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I'd like to plead the case and I'd like to just talk, if I could, a couple of minutes just about the purpose of LERTA's, some recent economic history, as well as, you know, what the local taxing bodies are also doing, current state of Luzerne County, if I could about this. And if remember, last year's LERTA that was, that we approved, council majority approved from North Point, was the same exact schedule. And they, Mr. Miles, when he spoke last meeting, that he was present here, he said he had never seen a property fill so fast, okay? And I think that speaks to the nature of this booming economy, we are growing at a 4.1%, 4.2% every year, according to the figures, and I think we're poised to see a revival here in Luzerne County and along the 81 corridor. If we keep in mind that taxpayers have already paid money to mitigate that land by the land trust, we've already, as taxpayers, we've also built up that infrastructure there anticipating growth, anticipating private enterprises come in and develop that property. And if you recall, when the Iris Company came here and this council also approved a LERTA for that corporation, I asked specifically, did that LERTA have any impact on you deciding to come here? And do you remember what they said? They said, no. They said, we looked at the rail lines that were available up there in Hazelton, as well as also the proximity to markets and our workforce. And I think you were at the groundbreaking, Mr. McGinley, there.
Yes.
It's very impressive.
Mr. Perry was also.
Absolutely, Mr. Perry, forgive me, forgive me, Chris. I'm very happy Iris chose to invest in Luzerne County, as I'm really, I see the North Point representatives here tonight, I appreciate you too, gentlemen, this is not, I want to be very clear, it's not a diss against North Point, I'm not trying to badmouth corporations, but I just think, we in Luzerne County, I think we can definitely get a better deal. And if I could continue, that it played no factor and they at least had, their LERTA was a sliding scale. To me, and ex-councilman Rick Williams, he was big on this too, that a LERTA should phase in property taxes. This LERTA essentially is a seven-year Keystone Opportunity Zone, it's 100% abatement, which to a lot of people, a lot of residents just find that very disagreeable, to say the least. So we're looking at three-year LERTA, even the three years are very small, it's like a 10% and 10%, 20% tax abatement. We got to understand too, if anybody's traveled north of Wilkes-Barre up to Scranton and you've seen the I-81 corridor, the 315 corridor, that is booming with construction. We are poised for a boom here in whatever kind of construction the entities are looking at, and I don't think we need to encourage it by withholding tax payments, I think it hurts, it hurts us more than it really benefits. If anything, employers are finding a harder time to find workers, not the reverse, and we're seeing this trend across Pennsylvania, across the country. Reservations from the other taxing bodies, I know that people are going to bring up the argument, well, look, Hanover and the school district already, Hanover municipality, rather than Hanover Township, have already approved this abatement scale. We can still keep that part of their abatement, yet we can alter this, this is our right, the state statute says we can do this. So I think a better deal for Luzerne County is in order here. This still allows North Point to boast in its negotiations with other potential clients to fill that space, they can still say, look, Luzerne County gave us a 10-year tax abatement, it's very much scaled back to the one they proposed, but it still gives tax rebates for 10 years, which I know, and the gentleman came and they said, look, every little bit helps in this outfit. But I also think you can negotiate that on the purchase price end, I don't think we have to just give back more taxes at the expense of our tax paying base. A multimillion dollar deal, which is sure to happen with this, it's not, if we approve this amendment, a couple hundred thousand dollars over the span of 10 years is not going to break a multimillion dollar deal, I just want the council colleagues to please consider this. But to us, it's a lot of money, and if you look at the tax, the seven years of tax abatement, it's 200 some thousand dollars, over just five years, that's a million dollars to us. And Sheila and I were just talking in the legislative committee, we're looking at 20 million dollars for 911, we're looking at 4 million dollars for voting machines, we're looking at the ARC payments going up this year, we're looking at these other costs that we're going to have a hard time with. So to see another 200,000 dollars walk out the door is very difficult for me. And I know, the argument is, okay, well, you're not making any money on this anyway. Okay, and I understand that, I'll address that too in a second, but if we're really looking to get jobs here, well then, Schoolkill County, they can build in Schoolkill County or Columbia County, and still our people from our area will travel there. Right now, we have people from other counties coming here to Luzerne County at that facility for jobs, they're working there. So I think if we can think regionally, instead of trying to shortchange the taxpayers, so be it, I think that land is valuable, I think that will be developed by somebody else. If we see to change up this agreement, if North Point says, no, we're not going to take a look at that. Going back to the history of KOZ's and LERTA, they were meant to rehabilitate brownfields and brown space and old factories. This is an open space, this is ripe for development, with obviously, there's some improvements that need to be made on it still, but the taxpayers have already paid for those improvements. Much time, much money has been sunk into that. So I really think, should we approve this again, I think we're misusing this tool, which is a noble tool, LERTAs have some value, but I just think that we're off mark. This should be to rehabilitate old brownfields, to build up old factories, there's no asbestos abatement needs to take place, there's nothing needs to be hauled out of there, they're building literally from the ground up. Current state of affairs in Luzerne County, as I said before, we've turned the corner in Luzerne County, we have arrested the debt, we're getting closer and closer to paying down half the debt in just six or seven years here. We've turned the corner, but I still don't think we're off the block, and we need to be vigilant about every little bit of money wherever we can find it. So when we've downsized staff and we've resurrected the bond rating and we've sold excess property to pay down the debt, you know, imagine, Dave Pedri, hats off to you, sir, you've done a remarkable job, I really appreciate that, as well as this council majority, but we still have these other things that are coming up, we have more commercial property rebates we have to give back, these thousands of dollars add up to real money. I am not a fan of corporate welfare, but I'm also, I'm certainly not an enemy of North Point, gentlemen, I don't seek you out, you are allies, you create wealth, the private enterprise creates wealth, the government does not create jobs, it does not create wealth. At the same time though, it's not fair to all those proprietors along the 81 corridor that are saying, where's my tax abatement? I have property here, why can't we develop my property? Well, people still have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes, and I think we are unfairly picking winners and losers when we look at these kind of extreme tax abatement programs. Lastly, and I'd be happy to hear from my colleagues too. We can still, we can make this amendment and it will go through, the large part of taxes are going to be in regards to the school taxes and municipal taxes, in the great scheme of the county, taxes aren't that much, but they are a lot to our budget and our bottom line. I really, I propose that, and again, I'm not on the negotiating end, that's the management, but I, again, they're not going to sacrifice the deal for the sake of several thousand dollars in this, for a multimillion dollar deal. They don't want to move south on 81 because of the proximate northeast markets, you know, I know it was said last time we spoke about this, oh, they're, you know, we're competing with Lebanon County, we're competing with Franklin County down in southern Pennsylvania, they're still two hours away from the northeast, and location is everything in this new economy. So when we have these giant warehouses, the population center still is here in the northeast, and we have this, it's very valuable land, and I just feel we are giving an unfair advantage, we're giving it away. They also know it's a quality site, it fits perfectly with the distribution maximum, you know, 55 in five, in other words, 55 miles an hour in five minutes, you know, get your trucks on the road and be down there, that's what this site offers, you can be 55 in one minute, we're right off the highway there, we have that exchange, it's a prime site. They're getting two out of three birds in this deal, they're getting the school district and they're getting the local municipality, tax payment, 100% for seven years. I think, and Steve Urban talked about this before, there are other ways for those entities to raise money, we have the property tax, that's where we get 84% of our revenue. So to say goodbye to even this little bit, it is a big deal. They're moving fast on it, because last year, they filled this up unprecedentedly fast, somebody else is going to snatch up this property, even if this council chooses to wait five years, and somebody comes and develops this property at cost, Luzerne County taxpayers are still making more money on it, because we would be making 100% of the taxes. And at the current state, we're not going to see any yield for this, well, I can't say any, but a large part of the yield for seven years. Council, please consider this, you have nothing to lose, again, if you wait five years, we're still going to see it developed, okay? I understand, I understand my other colleagues who feel this is economic development, I get it, we are going to develop this in the near future nonetheless. And I just think it's a slap in the face to taxpayers who, again, don't receive a tax abatement, but I'll open up for dialogue about this.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Wacus and Ms. Sedman, please.
Harry, just want to make two quick points here, just so we understand, there's no abatement on the land itself, the abatement is on the property.
On the construction.
So it's not, it's not, so there will be some tax revenue coming in on the land, although not as much as, but, because right now, there's no tax revenue, is that correct? At all?
Correct.
The land is just lying fallow, okay. Harry, do you really want to give jobs away to another county? You talked about, you know, why not build in, let's say, Schoolkill or Columbia? Harry, I'm looking out for the residents of Luzerne County, I wasn't elected to look out for the residents of Columbia, Schoolkill, or, you know, another county, I wish them well, I have nothing against those counties, but I really believe our responsibility is to our residents in our county. Now, you say the economy is doing great, it well may be. Harry, I know people with two, three jobs. You know, they don't have one job, if the economy is so great, why would they need two jobs, three jobs? I mean, I see these people, they have a track record. They have a track record, they're proven. Sure, if we don't vote for this, odds are, they will not stay, they'll move on, maybe eventually, somebody else will pick up this land. I don't want to gamble, Harry, I don't want to gamble on our people and the opportunities that this presents, so I, you know, I respectfully disagree.
I appreciate that too.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes. Harry, you mentioned how valuable the land is. Right now, as you have stated, we are getting nothing from it, we have never gotten anything from it, it has no value whatsoever to our taxpayers. I have an issue with that, they're coming in, they're doing a great job, they've given so many jobs under the other program, I like that. You're talking about the economy, the same as, I think the economy, although the numbers look good, when you take into account inflation, it's about even, maybe less. Secondly, thirdly, you talk about the I-81 corridor, which includes Lackawanna County, we do not know if many of those places that have popped up have also come to their commissioners and asked for LERTA.
A lot of them have.
Okay? And have gotten them, or have gotten other tax abatements, then, you know, that, we are also, we're in that business to do that. So just as Ms. Wacus say, I have to respectfully disagree.
Mr. Urban?
Harry, I agree with you a number of points, number one, we did pay for the land multiple times, number one, Mr. Konjorski, or Congressman Konjorski at the time, had an earmark called the Earth Conservancy, and he used Department of Defense dollars to buy all that property from Blue Call. I was in the Pentagon and the Foreign Intelligence Director at the time, and I happened to be reading through some of the legislation that came through, and that was an earmark, and I asked about it, and they said, well, we don't discuss earmarks, they're sort of pet peas for congressmen, so no one wanted to come forward and tell us exactly what this secret Earth Conservancy project was. You're right about the taxes, the majority of the taxes belong to the school district, the school district has agreed to abate them, and the local municipality has agreed to abate them. The local municipality can collect wage taxes as long as the people working there can live in their district, so they're getting something whether they abate the taxes or not, provided that people live in their community. The school district also gets a percentage of that tax also, I think it's a half a percent that they get off of the wage tax. The other issue though, and I think Ms. Wacus and Ms. Sedman fail to realize, and I'm surprised because Ms. Wacus taught school for college for many years, is the quality of the job. You know, I work in a warehouse and there's very few jobs in a warehouse that require any type of college education, okay? The managers, yes, but those managers, for the most part, aren't local people, they bring them in from out of town, they hire them at the corporate office and they bring them in, and the people that are here train them, but there are very few jobs in those facilities, in warehouses, in distribution centers that require any type of college degree. So again, this is another thing, we're going to bring in low skilled, low wage jobs, okay? And in some places, it's simply throwing a carton on a conveyor, letting it go through an automatic PID, an automatic receiver, and if it's received automatically, it goes across the building and comes down another conveyor, and somebody puts it back on the pallet and loads it on a truck, in other cases, it's simply somebody opening the box and manually scanning it like you're working in a grocery store. There's other type jobs, but for the most part, that's the receive part, and the other one is just either running down an aisle and picking stuff with a cart, putting it in a box and sending it out, putting a label on it, I mean, there's, you know, there's not that many functions. I mean, there's an IT function, but I don't think there's a requirement in there for college education, a lot of that's trained in-house. The other issue is, you're right about the economy, I think there's about a 4.2% unemployment rate in the state now. So the thing is, do we want to, we want to give away incentives for jobs that are, in my opinion, low skilled, low skilled. I wouldn't want my kids working in a warehouse, okay? I wouldn't want them working there. The other thing is, is that the majority of the jobs, again, the college, the college type jobs are not for people in our community. The other thing is budget, you mentioned that also. You know, we had some budget hearings a couple weeks ago, or maybe about a month ago, and that budget hearing showed that in about a year and a half, we're going to have to come up with about three and a half million dollars in additional revenue. Now, the manager is probably going to come to us then and say, you don't need to raise taxes. Well, in this case, by modifying the LERTA, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars at least, that's not going to have to go and be paid for by the people of this county, you know, who are strapped, you know, again, what is the senior citizen population of this county? Quite high, quite high right now, 30, going up maybe close to 40% now. And they're not all wealthy, they didn't all, they didn't all work for a school district, they didn't all work for a college, they worked in a factory, they worked in low skilled jobs and have maybe $900 a month unemployment, retirement coming in, probably not many 401Ks at that time for the people that are retired now. I can tell you, you know, my mother has nothing, she's worked in a dress factory for 20 years, her social security is very, very little, you know, but yet she still has a property and she still pays her taxes, which to me are like, like six months worth of her social security if she had to pay them herself, that's what her taxes are on a house that's assessed at, $92,000, while other people get away with tax free. You know, Bobby Miracle at the time, I mean, he, in my opinion, he had two commissioners in his pocket, and he was able to come in here and get all of his LERTA up there in his parks, free, and you can just pull the donations out in one sitting, one of the commissioners got like $22,000 in donations in an hour, from him and his family, and friends and colleagues, I still have a copy of the sheet at home. I just used to see what went on in this county, you know, and I am not going to support a full LERTA for anybody, I think the last LERTA was that one we supported for Hazelton, but at the same time, they came in and agreed to bring in jobs that at least paid $15 an hour, $15 an hour, as a minimum.
It was a true LERTA scale.
Right, and it was a scale on that, it was a scale on that LERTA. The one part of that was an ADM LERTA, which ADM came in, the school district and the local municipality gave them a different LERTA, because this is not like a KOZ where everybody has to agree. We can give no LERTA at all, and the other two will still stand. If this was a KOZ and we voted no, then the whole thing would die, but this is different.
And it will still be developed.
That's correct. So I'll support your amendment if it passes, but for those reasons.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we'll see if anybody else has.
Mr. Kelleher?
Mr. Miles is in the audience. Is there money going to have to be invested in the property to make this work? And is it many, many millions? Can you answer that, please?
Sure.
You can go to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I think I will get another chance to speak at some point, but I'll answer your direct question. Yes, twofold, if you've been on these sites, these are not pad-ready sites, the grading is extensive, the chamber piece, there's two pieces under consideration here, different ownerships, the chamber piece has a wetland that I have to mitigate, which is going to take me probably almost two years, so I'm going to actually start on the Earth Conservancy piece first, because of the DEP timing. And I think maybe, maybe some of you don't know this, the reason that I got these under contract was because I saw the proposal that Miracle made, which was going to require a $750,000 forgiveness from you, from the county to the Chamber of Commerce. I increased the purchase price $750,000, not by coincidence, so that the Chamber could give you back your money. That was not under Miracle's agreement, he dropped his purchase sale agreement, I picked it up the very next day so I could take it to the Chamber Board with an additional $750,000, because I saw your comments, Mr. Urban, in the paper, that's how I found out about it. And I said, whether you believe this or not, I don't think the county should be forgiving any of those parties $750,000. That is God's honest truth. So I gave a $750,000 cash inducement to the Chamber, which then comes to you in the form of, you don't have to forgive their, your past, whatever you want to call it, loan, investment, whatever it is, they owe you money, and that's why I came up with my purchase price. So when I look at that, and I look at our grading, and I look at our wetlands, I came to a number of what I felt that I could do in terms of the size of the site and where I felt comfortable, when it's my turn, I have some handouts of kind of our competing set, what's our competitive set, and what is their LERTA and KOZ? And my fear is, not my fear, my recommendation is, is that if we do not do the LERTA that I had proposed, I will be at a major disadvantage. I'm trying to win a project on Hanover 9 now, and I'm at a major tax advantage versus a site in Jessup, because they have LERTA and KOZ, and I'm fighting to win 150,000 here and 200,000 there to win that business's deal. Because my competitive set, as I'll hand out, the new norm is 10-year 100, and some are getting 10-year 100 with a KOZ, which is huge because of the sales tax exemption that the KOZ offers. So the KOZ, from a tax abatement standpoint, isn't powerful versus LERTA, but from a sales tax exemption, 7% of construction, when I'm building 60, 70 million dollar buildings, 7% adds up. Again, my case is, I've tried to do everything I can to throw you a strike in terms of, I didn't ask for, actually, on Hanover Ridge, I even watered it down for Hanover 9, and that's what I brought to you. So when you say that Mr. Pedri could do a better job negotiating, you're not seeing the three steps it took. steps it took to get to this point. He already negotiated me. That was a long answer.
A long answer, but I still, am I correct in saying it's gonna take between repairing the land and putting the building up multi-millions of dollars?
Site preparation, I have no, I have no road. I'm gonna have to build my own road to access the site. If you don't know, the Loomis piece can never sell because the chamber piece is the only way you can get access, so you've gotta build a road. You've gotta build a road that crosses the UGI easement. It's not, it's not for the faint of heart. That's all I'll say.
Ms. Sageman, and Ms. Wakas first, and then Ms. Sageman, please.
Okay. Mr. Urban, you're right. I am retired from Penn State. I used to prepare college students. I now have a merit status. I'm very proud of that. I don't teach anymore. However, even when I was teaching, I realized not everyone attends college. There are many, many people who will never attend college. All work is good work, and if these people are providing work for our people, I'm all for it.
Ms. Sageman?
Yes. There's a question for a statement, Mr. Urban, about the low-paying jobs. I know that we had this discussion before. If I remember correctly...
You want me to come up?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Miles will stay at the podium.
You were looking at me, so I thought that meant come up.
Yes. I thought under the first alerta that we had been talking about $15 an hour jobs.
Yeah, so...
And I know that you came back one day and said that wasn't true, that that maybe includes everything else to add up to the $15. So, because if it's $15 an hour, that's a very good rate.
Yes. Yeah, so I'll go back a little bit, and again, I know this is a debatable topic, and you know my stance on this. I don't live hurt. These are the people who vote for you, so I just have a very slanted, simple view, which is Chewy.com is starting up to $14 an hour. That's starting. They've seen wage growth. If you go to Glass Ceiling, if you go to, we checked five different websites, not just from Chewy, but five different independent hiring websites today, and all are starting, for Chewy, all list them, $14 an hour. So, that's starting. That isn't count overtime, and that doesn't count the first tranche of 1,000 to 1,200 that are already there. So, those people are already seeing wage growth and increases, because if starting is down here, typically, people that have been on with some tenure are gonna make a dollar to $2 more an hour. So, no, I've never said these are the old manufacturing jobs that are gonna make $30, $30, $50 an hour. The very first time I was here, I don't remember which commissioner asked me, but I remember her asking, saying, "You say that we have great labor. I hear that our labor isn't very good." And I said, "Well, we view you as great labor because you have an unemployment rate, and maybe more importantly, with the Chewys, Adidas, Patagonias of the world, you have an underemployment rate." And I always use the example of the folks that were making $8 an hour at Burger King. Maybe it's a single mother, maybe it's a single father, working two jobs. He's also picking up FedEx hours or something. These are the types of people that are applying, and at Chewy, we saw a nine-to-one ratio, applicant to hire. So, whether we like it or not, and again, I would say this with the school district in the room, is, I don't remember the ranking, but I think Hanover Area School District was like 356th out of 430 school districts in their ranking this year. Hanover Area, we all know, they have financial issues, but what they're trying to do, and what Mr. Kopko said at their hearing, we had a unanimous vote, was, "We have to figure out what happens to the kids who aren't going to the four-year university." Would I want my son, who's five years old, would I want him to work in a warehouse? The answer is no. Would I rather have him work in a warehouse than two part-time jobs? My, for me, yes, I would, especially with these companies who are doing benefits, overtime, and tuition reimbursement. I think there is, you have to just give me time, but I think we're going to see, Mr. Urban, I'm not trying to argue with you. You said, "We don't want to bring in these low-paying workers from other areas." They're not coming in from other areas. They're here. They're here. They live here. They're riding the bus. Norm, I don't know if Norm's here, we're seeing that bus route, the increase. These are folks that are in your community, so they're either at home watching Netflix, at Burger King, or hopefully in line as one of those nine-to-one ratio at Chewy, trying to get a job.
But now, the $14 an hour were around there?
Yes, and that's Chewy, which is the biggest.
Okay, so, does that include benefits?
No.
Okay, so that's a pure 14-an-hour job rate?
They listed it as 14 plus overtime plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And the second thing I have to ask, are there management positions available to our people, or are they all coming from corporate?
Yeah, so your highest management, Mr. Urban's right, your highest management typically relocates. And the reason why that is, is, I'm gonna make this up. Chewy was in Phoenix, and they had an assistant manager who knew the Chewy way and knew the systems, and that person was willing to relocate here, okay? So, that isn't somebody born and bred here, but for example, the manager at Chewy is Mike Gilbert. Mike Gilbert lives in the county now. He didn't live here before. Now, he works for Chewy. I don't know if that's necessarily a bad thing. So, is this somebody who went to Hanover Area High School and gets to work their way up to manager and make $90,000 today? No, this is a relocate that's been in their system somewhere.
But there are people that can ultimately become managers.
Yes, that's right. That's right. That's right. And, if you know anything about the granular detail, I probably have had more than a dozen, and he's probably watching now, Sam Gusto will say, "I got, I got five residents that are trying to get in at Chewy. I'm taking them up to meet with Chewy today." And he physically goes up there with them to make sure that they get their shot, make sure that the job fairs. If you saw the posting, I think there's a job fair today or tomorrow. So, not everybody lives in Luzerne County. Not everybody lives in Hanover. Not everybody lives in Nanticoke. But, if you're making, and I said this last time, if you're making $14, $16, $18 an hour, you are somewhat confined on how far you're willing to drive to take that job, because then, if you lived in Hazleton, you're gonna find a $14 job hour there and not waste the gas, right? You're gonna be able to take bus. Typically, we see a lot of folks in that range who are one-car families, so thank you to the Luzerne Transit Authority, County Transit Authority. We worked hand-in-hand with them, building the bus stops and everything. You know, I said it last time, when we're all said and done, we're gonna have put $280 million into the community. That doesn't count the $40, $50 million, $60 million that the tenants have put in. Do I wish Chewy's wages were higher for Mr. Urban? I do, but I also see eight or nine-to-one ratio of applicant to job, and I feel, I do feel personally good at night thinking, and I've told some other people here, I wasn't born here. Whether you think this is offensive or not, I hope you don't, but I view myself as part of you. I, we have tried to give out to the county when we can. We've given the school district. We're gonna put a new sign in for them. Little things they've asked us to do, and I'm willing to do that with you all. But, we are down into five-and-six-cent fights, and I'll, and I'll have the handout here of the NEPA competing sites and what they have. I'll hand them out to you. And I just, I just can't put both arms behind my back and expect to fight to win. And I don't have one arm quite behind my back, but it's about halfway behind my back under the alert schedule. But, I think the difference for us, and again, I don't take it too personal, Mr. Haas, is that I don't think it's just a booming economy. I think we work our butt off to win the Chewys, and we take a lot of risk on weather and our expertise. We are a factor in the recipe of why we've been successful here. And I hope that we can just keep beating Lackawanna County and Monroe County because of our ability to win the Chewys, Adidas's, and Patagonias. But, the economy is good now. Wind at our back helps, but it never means the water is smooth sailing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Snead?
Mr. Miles, I think you touched on my question, but maybe you want to say that figure a little bit slower so people could comprehend how much money that you've invested...
If my Vanna can put it up.
...in this property so far.
Yeah, so...
And not to rehash again this property, two developers, again, for the public, two developers went belly-up trying to develop this land previous to North Point, but I'll wait for your presentation.
Yeah, so with Hanover Ridge, this is just our money, not the tenant money, what they've put into it. We invested over $100 million, $111 million at Trayport 164, which is Hanover 9. If you've been by there, we closed on the Nanticoke piece today. We will close on the Hanover section next week. We're in a dogfight to win a large tenant on that, so not counting their investment. We'll have about $96 million, so just shy of $100 million there. And then with these three buildings, what we call Chamber Loomis, the ones that are before you today, that would be about $72 million. So, in all told, $280 million. I think my jobs number is low. I think, right now, we have jobs number, counting Chamber Loomis, at 3981. If I was to win the big deal at Hanover 9, and where I think actually Chewy's gonna end by the end of next year, I think we're gonna be well over 4,000 jobs. So, again, we do this around the country. I've not seen anything quite like this. Some of it's to your point, Mr. Haas, we have good labor, nine-to-one ratios on turnout. We have good logistics. Miracle has the same labor and the same logistics. Trammell Crowe up in Jessup, they have the same labor and the same logistics. So, we're gonna make those arguments, and these companies are going to check the stats, and they're gonna say, "There isn't much wage difference between Jessup County and Luzerne County." The same, basically the same wages, right? Same logistics to get on the interstate. They're gonna look at, "Oh, but I'm gonna invest $50 million in equipment, and I get the KOZ exemption on that, and their alerta's better. Why would I pick North Point?" And so, we're gonna have to prove that we're smarter, better, master, and that's sometimes difficult, especially if we don't have the alerta in place. So, we're proud that we've invested this much money here, and I hope you are, too.
Mr. Perry?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're still going in.
I'm sorry.
I think over the period of time that you've been here, I mean, the buildings look, they're absolutely gorgeous coming off the interstate. Ms. Wakas said about being proven. I think, not only have you been proven, like, I think there's a whole lot of amount of trust that's been built here between North Point and Luzerne County. I think the jobs that you've provided that weren't there before, the jobs, whether they be union or non-union, union, to build these places, Hanover Township was hurting before you came in, school district-wise, all around, just on your building permits and that. I mean, that's over $1 million that Hanover Township's made since then. Getting gas, going to the grocery store, more money than switching hands.
We had a local...
Again, I sit on the telephone, but I want, last time, I just wanna thank you very much for investing in us and trusting us, and we trust you.
Yeah, I think we've had a great trust level. Whether you agree with my stance on alerta or not, I appreciate you all, and I appreciate the job you do. I'll say two points. One is, one's anecdotal. The gentleman who sold propane to Chewy for the, I don't even know what they have, 100 forklifts, he sold more propane to Chewy than he sold the previous year in total. He was a local Hanover person. So, we don't count the economic impact that way. Second, I think I've gotten better every time. I know that I took some grief for Hanover Ridge from the unions. I did that. I knew what I was gonna face, but I had to deliver Chewy on a seventh-month schedule, and I was only going to pick a GC that I was comfortable with to go through winters in Northeast PA. You live here, you know it snows. So, I think I've done, I've gone above and beyond on Trayport 164 with Warren and his group, to be fair, to give two more weeks' extension on bidding, taking bidders that were close but weren't low, that were union, because they were local and they were union. So, I think I've tried to do everything you've asked me to do and more.
Mr. Perry?
One other item.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Again, I'd like to thank you, and there was a statement before made about Mr. Miracle. Mr. Miracle doesn't know me if I walked into him today, all right? I know what you've done so far for the county, and I know what he's done for the county. People don't remember when there was a flood here and stuff where the guy donated his manpower and everything else to help people.
I'm glad you said that.
So, let's not judge people on one thing here. This, Mr. Miracle's invested a lot of his money and a lot of his manpower with donations and volunteer work, with him as men and that. And I'd like to thank you and him for investing your money in Luzerne County. Thank you.
You'll hear first from me. I'm not gonna get into the politics of Mr. Miracle. He, I'm not gonna comment on him as a person, but as a developer, he is a very good developer. He builds a good building, and people want me to not like Mr. Miracle, and Mr. Miracle to not like me. The more the merrier, and I'm glad he's been here and done what he's done for all the communities and counties he's been in, because he's invested a lot of money. So, I would never say a disparaging comment about him.
I also have to comment on this...
Wait a minute. Wait. Mr. Perry's next, and then Mr. Urban.
Harry and Steve made some great points, and they're excellent, but I can't support that. I don't want to lose this guy. He means a lot to Luzerne County. And just the sake of brevity, I don't want to go through all the positives, but there are so, so many positives. We can't roll the dice and lose him. That's why I can't support him.
How, Mr. Urban?
All right, and I hope, Mr. Perry and Mr. Snead, that when Mr. Pedri comes to you in a year and a half from now and asks you for $3.5 million in tax increases, that you make that same commitment to the people of this county and say, "I can't raise your taxes. We're gonna have to find that $350 million in some type of efficiencies in county government." I hope you can say that.
Where are you coming with that from?
With the figure that we had a month ago at the briefing from the financial advisors that we're gonna have another $2.5 to $3.5 million in payments, in bond payments, that are gonna be due in a year and a half from now.
Debt service.
Debt service payments that are gonna require revenue. I think that's the point that Harry was trying to make. We're trying to save some revenue here, so we don't have to pass it all.
And I agree with you. I want higher-paying jobs, obviously.
Yeah.
But they're jobs.
Well, see, that's, that's the difference between you and I. I work those jobs. You don't. I see the people every day in those type of jobs. I see what they go through, okay? I know Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert was the GM in my building before he moved to Allentown, and now he's back at Chewy in a different company. So, I know Mr. Gilbert. He was the GM when I started there. He's a good guy, great guy. Was a great, great GM. So, they move around, the top guys do, okay? And most of the managers, the next level down, are not local primarily. They come from schools, out of town, right out of college, just like lieutenants in the Army, you know, come right out of college and go to a unit. You can make it so far in the company for the most part, and that's it. You gotta move on or move out, okay? That wage level, you can say there's a... That wage level, you can say there's a $14 an hour job out there for a floor supervisor? Yeah, a supervisor, not an entry-level employee. That's not what they start at.
Well, I disagree on that, Mr. Urban, because there was advertisement right in the paper.
I don't agree.
They had that figure.
Well, then I think a whole bunch of people will be jumping ship from these other other places.
And I think you might see that.
Yeah, maybe I will.
It was there.
But-
Ms. Hauck, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Good, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else?
Mr. Haas, you've got one minute. You had that.
I think I can go up to the challenge. I really appreciate the candor of this council. I really respect everybody on this table. This is so much more pleasant than just a few years ago. I really do. I make nothing personal, I make no personal attacks on anybody. I respectfully disagree with some of my members here, but I see where you're totally coming from and know that I feel that way. Mr. Miles and your team, I don't take offense to anything you've said. I know you are exquisite at what you do, and I too appreciate you. As I mentioned last time when I disapproved the last beautiful building, you know, we said that a couple of weeks ago, but I'm sure you did. That's why I'm here in my one-minute dissertation here. But I just want to bring a last couple of things, and I want to address a couple of things, too. The economy is booming specifically for development. I know we always lag behind here in the northeast, and Jane, I'm one of those people. I work multiple jobs, and a lot of you guys know that. I'm one of those guys, you know, we're single income, two kids. We're like a lot of people around here. I also understand about the gambling with this, but I don't see this as gambling like maybe Sheila and Chris have said. I see this as government being better negotiators. Why do business people get the plaudits for being shrewd and being good negotiators? Why government sits and rolls over? And I just think we've been on the losing end a lot here in Luzerne County. We've had a lot of deals that we're either forced into making some lousy property sales specifically, or just by the nature of the past couple decades of governance here, we're forced to make losing deals. And this is certainly not a winning deal, and I appreciate North Point for their investment. But again, my whole thing is not about necessarily the type of jobs that they bring. I think any job, just like Jane said, I'm up for whatever. I really don't have an issue with that. My specific issue is this, it's unfair to every other business out there who is trying to develop and trying to fill up their space as well. And we've got to see, too, I'm elected to serve the residents of Luzerne County, too, Jane, you didn't mention that. I'm not out there to make sure school goes better than us, but I'm just saying, we have to think regionally, and we have to not see as an us against them, like we're all in this together. Just like I remember growing up here and having these K O Z's where folks relocated downtown, they got a 10-year tax break, and they moved back out after the tax break expired. It was absolutely absurd.
Harry, I hate to say this, but only 60 seconds in a minute.
You know how I am. You know that.
I know. That's why I was straight at what you-
Everybody at home, I apologize.
All right.
All three people watching at home. But, you know, truly, I really feel that, this again, we're setting bad precedent here that we're built on entrepreneurialism. I appreciate these guys for what they do, but again, it's unfair against everybody else out there who's starting 10 steps behind.
Anyone else?
Just like to say a couple of things. Number one, anybody who's lived in Luzerne County for a long time, like myself and some other people, you know that land sat down there for years and years and years vacant with no value to anyone. And it's been a parcel down there that really, you know, Mr. Myers described parts of the, but if you went for a ride down there, you'd see, it's a terrible piece of property, and it would cost millions of dollars to bring it up to the standard where you can put a building on it. They're willing to do that. They're willing to invest that money. They're willing to invest money and bring in large companies who are going to have thousands of jobs. And, okay, you can dispute the salaries and the hourly rates, but they are jobs. And I think at this point in time, you know, we have to be competitive with everybody else on this I-81 quarter. And if we're not offering something that's similar, competitive, we're not going to get the opportunity. It's just that simple. So I think at this point, Mr. Haas, you have amendment, and Ms. Hauck seconded it. I think we've discussed it, and we'll have a roll call vote on it.
Ready?
Yes, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Question, this is on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Amendment fails. On the motion, we have, Mr. Snee made the motion, Ms. Sedman made the second. I understand Mr. Stahl, who's the attorney, would like to address before we go to any vote on this.
Sure, absolutely. I believe that there may have been a typographical error in the resolution that's before council now. There were two things that weren't in the proposal, I believe. I believe at the end of the abatement schedule, it references a sunset period of December 31, 2028, and that was something that we had not seen previously. And then, second, there was an application period, an effective date for the resolution of a three-year period. I believe it might be Section 5, and the other taxing bodies have passed their resolution ordinance based on a 10-year period.
It is Section 5 on page 4.
Correct, and so that 10-
And the other statement that you're speaking about is on page 3, 3.3, the last statement.
Is that a 10-year period from the time of vacancy, because right now it has a fixed period of time, correct, 2028?
That 10-year period would be for the L R D schedule, so-
Right, but starting when?
The L R D period starts in the year following the reassessment. So when construction is completed, the tax year immediately following completion of construction is when the L R D would begin. Now, that 10-year period, though, that was being referenced, was the period in time in which somebody has to apply. It's the period of time in which your resolution would be effective.
We would need a motion to make the changes.
Motion.
Make both changes?
Yeah.
Okay, that would delete. The statement says, "In no way shall the property tax abatement under L R D continue past December 31, 2028." Right? Mr. Snee?
Yes.
And on page 4, Section 5, we would change the three years in the first sentence to five years.
Leave the other taxing bodies pass a 10-year period, but a five-year period is fine, if that's what council prefers.
All over the rule, Mr. Stahl, five is fine.
Five? We have a motion by Mr. Snee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelleher? On the question?
So on the question, so if nothing gets built until 2022, it goes to 2032. If nothing gets built till 2024, the L R D goes until 2034. That's what you're doing here, right?
Right. That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, so, okay. I won't support that.
Okay. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yep.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Motion carries. Going back to the resolution now with those changes, Mr. Snee made the motion, Ms. Sedman made the second. On the question?
Another amendment, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Second amendment, I'd like to change the one that was written here on 38 to anywhere that it says L R D, include K O Z slash L R D in place of that. And I see that in the resolution, the third and sixth whereas. I see two of them in Section 4.3, and I see four, I see one of them in Section 7 on the 4.4.
Yes, as soon as Mr. Haas is finished.
Because essentially, again, it's just, it's not a big deal, but essentially, we're passing a seven-year K O Z with the schedule. It's not L R D, it's 100% tax abatement.
Well, it's L R D, though. It's L R D according to definition.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think that when the room reaches the road, it's an opportunity zone. We're getting 100% tax abatement.
You making that motion?
Make that proposal.
Mr. Haas makes that motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas's motion? Bearing none, motion fails. Ms. Hauck, you had something you want to say?
Yeah, it was actually pertinent to Mr. Haas's statement. I believe that 4.5 was removed from the latest version.
Yeah, it was.
I didn't find that in the latest version. It was in the document on 8/14, that that line, that 4.5 item was removed from the new one.
Yes. You're correct. No more amendments voting on the resolution. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yep.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Passing.
Motion carries. Moving down to number four. Motion to adopt the resolution declaring vacancy in the Luzerne County Drug and Alcohol Executive Commission. Mr. Bisconti had supplied us with a letter resigning from that particular commission. Mr. Kelleher makes the motion. Mr. Urban makes the second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Moving down to number five, authority boards and commissions, nominations and appointments. Have a motion to open up nominations.
So moved.
Mr. Snee?
Sedman.
Ms. Sedman? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard? Nominations are now open. Mr. Kelleher, do you want to say anything before we start nominations?
Yes. We have four people who interviewed. They have been reviewed by our council, and they're all without any fault or conflict that they can find. The names are Dr. Gene Camoni, Mary Agnes Kratz, Charlene Aben, and Dr. Robert Childs. If you haven't had a chance to read their resumes, it's like, wow. They're really impressive. Graduate of Princeton, Duke Medical School, Director of Children's Services. Man, I tell you, they're wonderful people. So I recommend them all highly to you. I say that because I had a reading during the interviews. I thank Bob Snee, and I thank Attorney Sedman, because I was indisposed and couldn't be here, and thank them for their hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question on the eligibility list. The name of the person who just resigned, being on the vacancy that we just declared, is listed on that eligibility list as having interviewed yesterday?
Yes. Oh, it's Thursday. Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead.
Is that an error?
No, that's correct.
No, he's interviewed because he wanted to be on another ABC.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So nominations are now open.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Gene Camoni.
Dr. Camoni. Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? We have four positions. Do we have a second nomination?
I nominate Dr. Robert Childs.
Dr. Childs, Ms. Hauck?
Second.
Mr. Urban? Do we have a third nomination?
Dr., I'm sorry, Mary Agnes Kratz.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Sedman? Mr. Kelleher?
I nominate Dr. Gene Camoni.
Mr. Kelleher did already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I nominate Charlene Aben.
Aben?
Yes.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Aben? Any other nominations? We have a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, Ms. Sedman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard? We have four people nominated, and we have four positions. Can we go right to the resolution? Okay, we're going to go right to the resolution to put them into the position. The term will be expiring at the end of 12/31/22. Do we have a motion for resolution for Dr. Camoni?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second? Mr. Urban? Roll call?
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yep.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
We have a motion for resolution for Dr. Childs.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Perry, second by Ms. Hauck. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yep.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
We have a motion for resolution for Ms. Kratz.[1587.74] We have a motion for resolution for Ms. Kratz.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Hoss, and then second by Ms. Howe. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wakas?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Moving down to B. We have a motion to open nominations for Luzerne County Housing Authority.
I'm Nate Robert Sacks.
No.
We need a motion. Motion open, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Hoss, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelleher, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, unheard? Nominations are now open.
Mr. Sacks, Mr. Chairman, second.
Sats by Mr. Hoss, second by Mr. Kelleher. Any other nominations, excuse me?
There's another applicant, Alan Yajewski.
Yajewski.
Yajewski, yeah. I'll nominate him.
Mr. Urban, who is, is there a second for Mr. Yajewski? Bearing none, nomination fails. Anyone else?
Move the nominations.
Move the closed nominations?
Second.
Ms. Howe, Mr. Kelleher, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition, any abstentions, unheard? We have a motion to appoint by resolution Mr. Sacks to the Luzerne County Housing Authority.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher and Ms. Howe could be second. Roll call, please.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm looking over Mr. Sacks's application, if I heard it from somebody else. And it says right here, "Housing Authority current chair just found out my term expired